I'd like to call the order of the city council meeting, day Wednesday, office six. We will stamp our implications with an act of honor, off our business.
Thank you so very much. Eternal God, I've been so thankful and grateful to be in this your presence, Lord, at this city commissioners meeting. We pray, God, that though you would lead in God as only you can, God, our mayor, commissioners, Lord God, all of the leadership of this great city. We thank you, Lord, for the citizens that thought about Robert to be here on this evening, God. And, Lord, we pray also for those who are not able to be here. Thank you, God, for blessings with such a wonderful city to live in, to work in, to play in. Keep us now with your protective care orders, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pray that they believe in the life of the United States of America and as we were founded, for which stands one nation, under God, and individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, we got a couple of issues, uh, agenda here. I have a, uh, I would like to make a question.
Okay, I would like to make a complaint if you reviewed the light number one, the potential to address the issue of the test.
Okay, I have a number one, uh, can I get a second one, second? Pop motion, and second that we rely on number one to be, need to address it at a later date. Any more further questions to that? Then, uh, we can raise your right hand. Okay, that, air so we can literally add number one one. Any other?
I would like to add, uh, to the consent agenda, uh, uh, maybe, uh, to add to the consent agenda, critical, memorandum of understanding between the city and Brunswick and the other rural cemetery society.
Well, we don't want to add this in time here, it would be better than anything else.
You, you don't want to add?
No.
I got a question.
Okay, this, this is.
Okay, then I would like to, please, call.
And, uh, okay, any other motions? Any other additions or additions to our agenda? There being a good move right here. Uh, I don't have a further comment period for that. I was briefly, uh, approached by someone who wanted to address our commission. So I'm allowed, uh, to spend the minutes to come forward and address our commission. State's name and advocacy.
Hello, my name is London Daisy, I advertise twenty-one oh seven East Main and Bronx. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and commissioner for our opportunity. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my family. I have lived in Brock since nineteen eighty-one, and nineteen ninety-nine, the purpose of the house is to come on these three. And my home has been burglarized three times in the last nine months, and I bet up that I had more than that. First after December last year, March of this year, and last Wednesday. And what's to get higher than that? I work hard, my brother and I, and I own business, we try to help whenever we can. Our community community community, we belong to with the London Baptist Education Foundation, right in our church, very high temple. And enough is enough. So I'm asking the commission today, the police, everyone, you know, go into something about the crime in this city of Brunswick. It has to stop. I think I'm a fellow now, but not the introvert, and all these things happen, but it happens too many times. And we need to believe. And I know my own, my own city going through things, but I think the crime is something that address right now immediately. And we, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. Appreciate that very much. Thank you, folks, we'll put the ticket up by the place, sir. Okay, uh, I'm saying agenda approval, July sixteen, two thousand fourteen, public hearing, and regular scheduled meeting minutes, and July twenty-third, special call, meeting minutes. Uh, there any additions or deletions to the minutes? And take a second to approve, I mean, to approve them, uh, contain a motion to use.
May I make a motion to set the minutes, to approve the minutes that's written?
Second.
Okay, my pop motion, second that we, uh, that the minutes be approved from July sixteen, public hearing, and regular scheduled meeting, and also special call, uh, meeting minutes. Are there any more discussions? There being, uh, all those favors please raise your right hand. That motion carries, and thank you so much. Um, I have number three. Approval, authorized use of spot five funds for the construction of Urbana Cemetery Sewer Replacement and Lift Station nineteen elimination. Uh, I'm sitting here, Mr. McFee, to present.
Good evening, good to see y'all here. Uh, the purpose listed authorized use of spot five funds for the construction of Urbana Cemetery Sewer Replacement and Lift Station nineteen elimination. Funds were allocated in spot five for water and sewer projects within the city of Brunswick boundary. Plans for Urbana were reported by the city of Brunswick Water Sewer Department before JWSC took over. And we put on hold when JWSC took over. By changes made in cause of changes in infrastructure in the area since your original design necessitated some changes. This project will eliminate the lift station in the median of US seventeen. If you look right in the median in front of Popeyes and, uh, McDonald's on seventeen, there's an antenna sticking up there, there's a lift station underneath that. And it's, and that's, and we've been trying for years to get it eliminated, that's, you know, that's what we're doing with part of this. The project will eliminate the station in the median of US seventeen, a large number of material and manholes, and all the streets included in the project area will be retained during this project. JWSC has requested city of Brunswick use these funds to assist them in the project. And there's correspondence attached in back of the, of the statute court that is them asking us to do it, and us tell them what we can do. Build this plan according to the law says, and a copy of the acts of JWSC, city of Brunswick operating agreement, that has all that information. Budgeted information, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and budgeted in the spot five for the JWSC project. The options are to use, authorize the use of spot five funds for the construction of Urbana Sewer Cemetery Sewer Replacement and Lift Station number nineteen elimination. Or, or other options to use that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for. Uh, the director of JWSC is here with us, their engineers here with us, and the JWSC commissioner, uh, here, my, at least, uh, so if, uh, I don't have any questions to just pass.
Okay, uh, I see Commissioner Papazano here, uh, he's the chairman.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, I look all the way around, set my question.
And also Commissioner Sandy. I see, uh, the case, he represents the city on the board as well. So, uh, Mr. Papazano, would you like to address this as well, with this, with favor of?
Uh, it's a pleasure, sir, actually, I'm a director, probably, we have a lot of knowledge about it. As you know, we've been doing a lot of work, trying to rehab and reconstruct a lot of the infrastructure, and this is just one of the steps that gets us there. We still got a lot more to do. If you need any assistance, I've got two here, Kate, for people who need to.
Is this point, when, when you speak about elimination, is the, that lift station is going away completely, it's no longer needed?
Right now, the way the system's set up, everything is drafted, flows all through Urbana, and goes out into middle seventeen, and then picks it up and pumps it all the way back around to K Street at Pill. It does in the van over there, to the building, yeah. Uh, what this will do is actually put a new system around the outside of Urbana, and some of it in the inside of Urbana. And it will change where, instead of flow of gravity flow, just US seventeen, it will flow gravity flow into the K Street system in front of Whispering Hills. So it will flow like graphic, and that will eliminate not only the lift station, but all the maintenance which are the cost to them, and the electric bills, and all that stuff that's in it. So it completely eliminates the problem that's been brought.
So it will eliminate, you fill in with?
Yes, it will be, it will be, it will be properly a bank, which you not bomb out of the filter, same thing top of it, back up.
And then, the same thing would hold true to any manholes that are in the median area, plan?
Yeah, there's, the only one there is one for the, the lift station itself.
Um, I just want to make sure that his work is done before the gateway, he, his work, the re-landscaping, the gateway grant that the city's been awarded. I want to make sure that this work gets done before the landscape work.
Yeah, it was third, it was third place about six foot of diameter.
I realize that, I want to make sure that that work is done before landscaping. And if we need a new base map or anything showing where utilities and infrastructure is, because of any D E work that's going on once we use, and it's with the landscape.
Uh, also, my question is, how soon you plan to start answering what's up, uh?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the project is listed for six to nine months duration. Uh, these ones have a proper bidding procedure, it's sixty days minimum. Uh, so we plan to follow in on the eight to nine months, uh, with no problems. And, uh, what is the duration of the gateway project?
Well, it, we, we have to, we have to plan and do the installation of the landscape material. I think we have a thirty-six month time period to do that. Um, but we want to make sure that the landscaping goes in in the fall or the winter, not in the spring or the summer. But we, right now, we, we would need to work around this schedule. But I think we.
Yes, we're, our process will be putting it in front of our facilities committee, we're just waiting for the approval of the two hundred and fifty thousand from your end. And then it will be put on the next commission meeting for approval. We already have this slot in our R and R program, and, uh, we can jump on this right away, since we can get a, uh, our proposal out.
So you would have all this work completed, the city could then come in, let's say September or October of two thousand fifteen? Do you?
I think, I think we will be, like, in the day before, where this has fifteen.
Well, I don't know specifically, when you talk about Popeyes, McDonald's, and Popeyes, I mean, that's the general area where that gateway grant is, is going to be affected. Now, it might not be in the same area.
I'm supposed to go along with the solid that I have. The costs of, the, the, but anyway, what I'm saying is, there, I have a disturbed place about that big ramp. You would have to do, speaking.
And the timeframe of September or October of two thousand fifteen is achievable for your water service.
I want to make sure of that. We're not going to run into that.
In case you, you represent us on that board, what was your thoughts?
Sure, I do. And the only question I have is, if we get a grant of, uh, some, uh, work by the old residence building there, now storage company, does that go out to the middle of something? That work that we just ran?
And, and where now?
Like, did we have all this in storage building?
The way in storage building in West Marine?
McDonald's.
We did, I don't know, we did it in between the.
Like, like, thanks for West Marine.
Between West Marine and kind of all storage building.
That's what I'm saying, does that go out to?
That's Storm River.
So that doesn't have any?
Has nothing to do with it, too.
So, does, what, is, are you going to have to go back in and take anything out of the traffic lane there from McDonald's? Or you'll just blow that off?
Yes, there'll be a, there'll be a hole that let me around in the middle of the median, that, that'll be.
All that was broken on that road was stayed.
Yeah, there's a, there's an eight inch height and four inch height, because there were a lot of, the, the land should have to fill those with, you would blow a building, I'm quite saying that, though. So there'll be, I mean, we got eight inch height and four inch. And the last manhole is the intersection of whatever that street is behind Popeyes. Maybe.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe, yeah. That's where the last manhole is.
Just, just, I can add, all the designs, the area that's been completed, uh, I've just been advised that this funding is available, being available this evening. And so we can have this out for bid within sixty days.
Will be you, if you're view of publishing the question?
Yes. Yes, Commissioner.
Any further questions, commissioners?
I would like to make a motion. Go ahead, please. I would like to make a motion that we authorize the use of spot five funds for the construction of Urbana Cemetery Sewer. If you replace one of them, and if they, uh, actually they are replacement and lift station nineteen eliminated. We're going to replace, we're going to eliminate.
All right.
Second.
My motion is second that we, uh, approve, uh, the use of those funds, spot five funds for this project. And any further discussion? There being, uh, all those favors please raise your right hand. That motion carries, and thank you, Mr. Madison. Appreciate it very much, sir.
I'm still here.
Oh, you are. I have number four. Application for Dr. Parker Transportation Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant for Mig. Advertise for this, for, uh, for this grant, for the contract, about fifteen.
The purpose of the authorization is for mayor to sign the application for the fund, the big funds, and for the city engineer to advertise for bids for the G Dot Mig contract for twenty fifteen. In the past, it overlooked the roadway improvement grant program, which was a local assistance road drag, program, it was administered by G Dot. Unless the streets of the city wanted to be paved, it was submitted to G Dot and paid with the term of this one's paid. And then G Dot left it on a, a regional purpose, and, and they, yeah, did the improvements district wide, and the approach is they can choose which transportation projects are selected for funding and approach from G Dot. It will be responsible to the city, to the places that did manage projects, maintain the streets of the city, very important, and use the funds available from this program in our region. Use the funds available from this program will help distribute the street paid with the funds we have available. Because these blocks didn't pass in our region, we have to max the funds we give from G Dot about thirty percent. With last year's make funding, city was able to construct extensions to Powell Bar Drive, Powell Bar Drive, to Harris Farm Road, and pay part of the King Drive from Second Avenue to Third Avenue. The extra tonnage of asphalt, a few paid intersection turnouts on Player Street, and several other streets in city of Brunswick. Using asphalt prices for the latest paving bids, we received estimated that the city could pay about seventy-four hundred feet of streets. Unless the streets be considered for tax and report. Budgeted information, the legal, the full amount for city of Brunswick for twenty fifteen is a hundred and forty-two thousand five hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-two cents. Required max of forty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-six cents from spot five streets accounted. Total project budget is a hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty cents. Options are authorized for mayor to sign the application for the G Dot Mig funds, and for the city engineer to advertise for bids for G Dot for the big contract for twenty fifteen. We're taking no action for just time. The department's recommendation is to authorize mayor to sign the application for G Dot Mig funds, and for the city engineer to advertise for G Dot Mig contract.
Thank you, sir, uh, if you have, I know how few questions, uh, appreciate it, like, if you got this to us, you know, time to have it so we can, uh, we can take a look at the rules that are being, being paid. I have a question, uh, have we been on the work of payment two thousand fourteen?
Yes.
Uh, you said last year, you saying last year, as in, top thirteen to top fourteen?
Our twenty fourteen with Mig money goes from June.
Oh, that was the fifth year?
Yes, July, July, July. So, our twenty fifteen funds became available by July. And we have to have the application turned in by the last day, December, that you, like I said, there isn't a hurry on this, other than the fact that I don't like the people have trouble with bad roads, and they're going to have to. The sooner we pay it, the better, on behalf of our.
Commissioner, any questions?
Uh, I have one question, uh, I'm wondering, I don't know if Mr. Mike, you know this, uh, why isn't L Street on this list?
The way we make this list, uh, as people call in, complain, we, we, they call it, uh, the public works, and they complain, they call it gay, they call it, they call it, they call y'all to complain. And if, if we get this information, we could put the streets on the list. Uh, these are the streets that are in worse shape as far as everybody concerned helps us. And that's why, that's why I sent this list out to y'all, and asked you your recommendations back on what streets you'd like to see paid. And the, what shows here is tier one, those are the streets that y'all listed. Some of these streets, at least two of you listed on your list. So, we can pay about seventy-five hundred feet of streets, and the list that I can up with, and before y'all, because the mayor was out of town, he didn't get, didn't get the list to me. But that came up to twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-three feet. So, we're going to have to pare this list down as we go, but we don't have any idea what price we're going to get, and how many feet we're going to be able to pay until we ask you to bid. Because what, what we're doing, we're, we're bidding out, we're, we're asking them for a unit price of how much ton they're going to charge us, and how much they're going to charge us for tax, strike. And, uh, once we get those figures, then we'll know how much.
I have a question.
Yes.
I drove these streets, and I could not find F Street from MLK until.
I started to go pick you up that year or something.
I would have been there then.
It's really there, it really is.
Okay. I don't know where kind of found that one. Um, and I guess part of my question is, when you're talking about F Street, you, at the top of the list, you've got it from Norwich to Albany, and then from MLK to Tilton. So really, you're leaving out one block of F Street? Between, what's all, between Albany and MLK?
Amber's. So the people block, one of Albany to Amber's, one of Amber's, I think, I think. Like I said, the reasons are all here, the way they're on there, it's for people calling in, y'all have called in, yeah, different people calling. The, the one that really bothers me that it didn't go there, if I was going to pick the street, pick papers, and anything else, it'd be R Street, from, from Norwich over to, oh, really, MLK? But that didn't, that wasn't any of them that any of y'all picked, so it didn't go on to tier one. Though, what, what I asked for tonight is, is to be able to go ahead and send the application to the B O P S of the Senator, and number two, go ahead and get a, get a bid from the contractors around and find out what we got, and let us know for sure how many feet we can do. And then we'll sit down and check it out, because we'll, we'll go through it and evaluate it again, so. Yes, sir.
And just on the Springdale, Hopkins Hardwood?
Yes.
That's where we're going to have some new construction, is that correct?
They, they have, they are talking about, there is an engineering company that's doing a block plan now at their doctor's office.
And I, I didn't bring that to your attention, that you wanted to wear, we didn't there, it was more coordinated.
Right, that's, I mean, that was one of the districts you picked, that's what I thought.
And it's got a hall, and a little bit out there, and, and just paid, and.
Right.
I don't know, I know they're in the architectural, uh, state, and that's, I guess, a definite thing out there. And, and the other one that I just wanted to bring up, not on this list, but I had just discovered that it did not get paid when I thought it wasn't being paid. And it's probably all my fault, uh, that I don't understand what's going on here. Uh, I thought that front series nursing home between Second Ave and Fourth Street was going to get paid. And, uh.
The Second Ave to Fourth Street?
The Second Ave to Fourth, the Lee Street, actually, Seater Nursing Home is on the street.
Second Street to Fourth Street, not Ave, not Second Ave.
Second Ave.
Second Street? Second Ave.
Second Street is what it's.
That might be quite so, I don't ever last confused, I didn't know what he was talking about.
You can look at those of that, and just check, because again, I thought it was going to be paid, and it was just, uh.
And it's on One Street?
Totally.
It's Lee Street?
Between, yes.
Between Second, from Second Street to Fourth.
Really in bad shape, and, and with, with, uh, the nursing home there, we have a lot of folks that travel that residence. Again, I know I worked on it when I first got into commission, I went out and met with the, y'all were at the nursing home, and assured him that, uh, it would get taken care of, and it, it, it happened. And again, I think it was just my mistake, I'm, 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 I didn't show that, uh, so we could look into that.
All together. But like I said, we're going to be able to take about seventy-five hundred feet, probably, maybe, if we give, if we give a good price to County God, which they're doing a lot more, you know, they got ninety dollars a ton.
Price of gas, day to day.
Yeah. But, you know, we might be really lucky and be able to do eight thousand feet, and that tier one's got twenty-one thousand, so, I mean, we got to, we're going to carry this this way down. And all the streets needed, but all of them, yeah. It's just, it's that sad reality.
You know, I, I agree with Commissioner Wade, because L Street is really deep looking at, and we need to be serious about it. But what would be a definite, uh, complete, if you don't have L Street, in your opinion?
Are you talking about, are you really talking about L Street, or you're talking about State?
Yeah, we're talking about L Street.
Okay. Uh, from, if you're talking about all the way from Newcastle, or it turns into State, and that'd be forty. Uh, from, if you're talking about all the way from Newcastle, over to where it turns into State, then that'd be forty-five, a hundred, forty-six hundred feet. It's just like, you know, Rimmel Street from B to six, that's forty-seven hundred, that's only forty-eight hundred feet. You know, that takes half there, that takes over half of every little one street. And we did that one, we started right here and then Rimmel Street to where there are two of each. That was all our.
Is it possible to L Street places?
Yeah, I mean, but there are so many streets, there are so much worse shit going on. Look, go, go, no, we're talking about R Street, I mean, look at R Street, it's awful. It is one awful.
Go ahead, Tom. Also, the man who wants to build and look at, on Combe Avenue going into Combe and Summerton.
Yeah.
The Redman out there is really saying this is the only thing that we have in that country. And it's, it's got abs, the Redman's that wide. And you got abs a little bit too wide.
Is.
But that falls, but the structure is looking good. I don't know how open it is. It's, I mean, you got gaps like that.
I'd have to check for G-Dot, find out if we can use Lamek funds to pay any side of the cemetery. I think it has to be one of the streets that's on the state secondary. I think, I don't know that for sure, but I don't think we can use these funds to pay the cemetery. In lack of some other general fund, fund, or, or get a discharge of cemetery.
And I do not like the process, which is going here on New Castle. They have a lot of filling with asphalt and park.
Yeah, I'll get a check, yeah.
I don't know if that would be feasible to do out there, looking at the, and a little paint and all roads.
Right.
It wouldn't be likely, if we need to do maintenance out here, serious maintenance, we keep this for a couple.
You can, you can do that and save the street for a long time. It's like parking lot behind Five O Three, we went in and just, and coated it, and you can get five. You can keep, get it a five years out of your asphalt, coated. Uh, you can do the same thing on this, but I'm planning on building that on Norwich Street, too, on that section from Monk to Newcastle, right there in front of the church. We went in and redid a section with handicap parking in. The rest of the street has got pretty good asphalt, but it's got cracks and, or that line, like I said. And we're talking about building that in there, too, so I'll look at them.
Any further questions, Commissioners? We have the benefit of the two, that out these, uh, uh, home for streets to be paid. Realizing that there are not all the resources that we could have placed on here with our limited funds. Uh, this is what we're gonna do, get start. Hope we can start as soon as possible, so we can get some of these things taken care of. So, with that, any questions, Commissioners, entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, it's offered motion, uh, we authorize Mayor to sign the application for G-Dot-Lamek funds and for the city engineer to advertise for bid, G-Dot-Lamek funds, contractors for twenty fifteen.
Section.
Proper motion says that we approve, uh, for signing the application for Lamek grant, uh, and funding here to, to advertise for bid so we can move forward with this project. Are there any further discussions? I'm sorry, this is the project. And then, in all other favor, please raise your white hand. And motion carries, thank you.
I'll, I'll get that application.
Okay, we have our Senator, uh, finance. And our finance directors, if deals may go forward, uh, we will get ready for this.
Do you have it for you, the financial statements as of June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen? That is year-to-date, so we're at one hundred percent of the year. This point, the year-to-date revenues are fourteen point nine billion, year-to-date expenses fourteen point four billion. So, we were one point three percent over budget in revenue collections and two percent under budget in expenditures. The cash balance as of June thirtieth in the general fund is one point four million dollars. The lost contributions or lost distributions that we received in June of this year are four hundred and eighty-seven six twenty as compared to June of last year of four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Total added worm tax in June of this year, fifty-six thousand compared to seventy thousand in June of two thousand thirteen. And the added worm tax for vehicles was twenty-eight thousand compared to twenty-eight five for Rusk. On Squash Five, the next page, we have collections from life-to-date of sixteen million four hundred twenty-three thousand, seventy-five thousand. That was for interest income earned. I apologize that there in my life-to-date total, I have five thirty-one, two thousand fourteen, that should be June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. I forgot to change the date there. But those figures are as of June thirtieth. The total expenditures, life-to-date at Squash Five, twelve point five fifty-six million dollars. We currently have a balance and Squash Five, uh, three million nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Community Development Admin, which is basically just a conduit fund, has a balance of twenty-two thousand at the end of the year. And the Roosevelt Paris Multipurpose Center, we have revenues for the year of three hundred and twelve thousand, eighty-six thousand dollars. That was from grants, two hundred thousand dollars of that was transfers over from the Recapture Fund. And program income is twenty-six thousand dollars. Expenditures were three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. We have a cash balance as of June thirtieth of six thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars. The Jekyll Recapture Fund, which is basically a segment fund, has very little revenue, we haven't come out. Has a balance of twenty-seven thousand as of June thirtieth. And that's the same true with the Community Development Federal Fund. It had a balance at the end of the year of twenty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars. And the Cypress Mill Recapture Fund, since the inception of that fund, we have revenues of one million three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Thus far, we've spent a million seventy-three thousand of that. The only expenditure from that fund for the month of June was fifty-eight thousand dollars, which was a transfer over to Roosevelt Paris Center, which will say there's a two hundred thousand dollar year-to-date, which balances with the total that we showed on the previous page with Roosevelt Paris Center. The cash balance in that account as of June thirtieth, two hundred and forty-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. The sanitation fund, we have total revenues year-to-date of one million two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Total expenses of eight hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Cash balance in that account is seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. Four hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars of that, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, is from property tax billing collections that are for expenditures that will be paid out over the next six months for services that will be rendered. We had no animal control expenses for the month and no traffic control expenses. Waste management deals that were paid out in June for the month of May. Trash pickup was seventy-three thousand one hundred and thirty-one dollars. Illegal refuse cleanup was approximately six thousand dollars. Streets sweeping approximately twenty-five hundred dollars. Whispering oats, thirteen hundred dollars, and trash can pickup and deliveries of eleven hundred dollars. And the recreation and neighborhood departments, I gave you the two columns. One is for the current month of June and one is for year-to-date for the entire year. If you look on the, the last page there, expense totals for the month of June were thirty-seven thousand dollars. Thirty-five thousand of that was for the Neighborhood Community Center, which is the Roosevelt Lawrence Center, basically expenses for that. The year-to-date figures for the recreation included the Neighborhood Community Department is two hundred and eight thousand dollars. And out of that type, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand is for the Neighborhood Programs at Roosevelt Lawrence Center.
Is this the period ending the fiscal year? That's the whole for the end of fiscal year?
Yes, yes.
What we use for the whole recreation?
Yes, now, there will be, there might be a few changes. During the year, we basically account for things on a cash basis, meaning as we pay it, it's accounted for. At the end of the year, because we're on a modified accrual for all the purposes, there will probably be some accrued expenses that will be added to this so that this number won't be the exact number we'll see on the actual June thirtieth audit figures because there are some accruals that need to be made.
Right. It's also, then the foundation for the Roosevelt Lawrence and the Continous System hasn't received any funding at all yet?
Not to my knowledge. I've not seen any funding for it.
So, we have transferred, I think you said?
Two hundred thousand dollars to the Continous System. Correct.
With no funds from the county. Any further questions, Commissioners?
I would like to tell you one other thing, I think we mentioned this a couple of meetings ago, that we've had an audit in our Comcast franchise fees that we get through the GMA. We contracted out to someone else, but the audit case was six thousand dollars. But we were just given word that we'll get a little over twelve thousand dollars back on that, fees they found that we did not collect. And the good news about that is, there's probably about four thousand dollars a year going forward that we'll start collecting that they had not been showing on the site.
You can't get the calls, the Comcast's not doing very well without, out of systems, so hopefully they can do better.
We paid twelve thousand and we're getting twelve back.
We paid six and we're getting twelve back, so we're getting out with about six thousand. But as I said, that will increase what we will be saving in the future by about four thousand dollars a year. Apparently, I think there were some problems, from what I understand, I had to say in the final before, that we weren't possibly getting some of the late fees later. So, now we're good to be getting this one forward.
Any further questions, Commissioners? If you look at, or what's done for the whole year, not for the year, a year-end, excuse me. Captain, this was also what's done without us having, got, uh.
Tax anticipation, but we did not have to go, tax anticipation, not this year.
Something we're doing better?
Cash flow, I guess we're doing better. I'm always very cautious.
So, if you're getting, uh, at the oral back, if you're getting trash collection, if you're getting the money upfront, you gotta cash flow.
Well, the general fund's separate from sanitation, so the sanitation fees aren't affecting the fact that, really, that we didn't have to get a tax anticipation made. Because that's totally separate. But yes, we didn't have to subsidize it either, so that makes a difference. Right, that's why I'm very cautious, I still say don't spend any money.
Well, we, we find ways to have that much paid money for us, so that's not that we, we're forward with some typical financial program that will do some of those things for us. Commissioners, uh, any further questions, I will entertain a motion.
My question that we approve and accept, the financial report that's presented.
Section. Proper motion, secondly, we accept our financial report for June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen as presented. Any further discussions? And being in all other favor, please raise your white hand. And motion carries, thank you so much. That brings us down to our hearing, uh, hearing alcohol beverage license, uh, will be presented by Mayor Compost.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. We refer your consideration in provisional alcohol license for a business that has yet to be constructed. Thirty-three hundred, thirty-three hundred block of Norwich Street, that would be the corner of Norwich and Fourth Street. And, uh, the preliminary work has been done and there's no reason, uh, for a background check that these owners would be prevented from getting an alcohol license. There is the consideration of, uh, our city ordinance and the distances for this business, especially considering that it's not, uh, even constructed yet. It's, it's proposed to be a, uh, package store, which is Distilled Spirits, and the owner is, um, Mr. Patel. But the, uh, ordinance, three dash forty, does say that, uh, a distilled spirit store, uh, if it's located within five hundred yards of any property, so, for or used for residential purposes or which is owned by the city or other government agency and planned for residential use. So, obviously, this business is across from Norwich Commons, we've got a letter, um, from the development company. This, uh, doesn't support this, this business. And, uh, there's also the consideration of a daycare in the same block, uh, south of Norwich. And then there's also a church that is south of Norwich, that could be within that distance, probably is within that distance. So, that's the, the presentation I have for this provisional license.
Any recommendations, sir?
We do not support provisional licenses, and if nothing else, it's because a provisional license is not generally an issue as far as we know, for a business that is not built here. And the other consideration is, will they even, under this ordinance, be able to secure a regular alcohol beverage license for distilled spirits?
Thank you. All right, I guess I will, before I get, uh, question before you guys leave a comment, I would, uh, like for anyone here to speak for or against, uh, this alcohol license. Please come up, please say to me, and you go ahead with it, please.
Good evening to everyone. Hi, my name is Adri Peterson. I am the owner and founder of the Ross Lake Center, I'm here with my husband.
Good morning, Peterson.
We are the owners and the keeper of the residence, both of them located at twenty-six O State, Alton Avenue. We do not, um, see fit for that organization to carry, um, that type of license. We provide chocolate services for the children of the Zebra Run School, especially our innocent youth. And under our license, we have to provide a safe environment for children. When we chose that location, we were not aware that a liquor store was in the area or, um, teaching to come into the area. And we just thought fine that it would match very well with the culture that we're wanting to protect on Norwich Street. As time, we wanted to bring businesses that will be productive for the community as a whole. We like what's going on now in the area and we just want to maintain safety in the area. And we want for the children and parents to know that it's a safe. And we want for the children and parents to know that it's a safe environment for their children to attend. Thank you.
And not only have we licensed for a childcare facility, we also started a non-property that is dealing with address youth. And we're mentoring them and teaching them principles. And, you know, we're not against any women that drinks, that's your personal business. But what we're trying to provide there is a safer environment for young people and to teach them different principles other than seeing in their communities, constant consistency of liquor stores all over in their communities. And that's why we're open to this situation. We're not against them wanting to provide a business or build their business, because we know how that is. But we're just against that type of business.
My name is Al, I'm a business owner, about seven years working in the store for the last twenty years. And I've told you that here, having a pack store in the area due to the fact that the type of people that comes into the area, when they come there, they're looking for a safe place to spend their money and a safe place to be. And when I'm speaking to the fact you have daycare and also churches there in that area, I don't think that would be a wise thing to do, to have a pack store in that area because of the people that come. It's a business area, the type of business area that it is, it's the people that who comes in to spend and to look for a safe place to be. Now, a few days ago, my place was broken into. A few days ago, a couple of days ago, because of different ones that's coming into the neighborhood, growing to different things. And I will, I hope that y'all will look into this matter to resolve it, because we don't need that type, those type people coming into the neighborhood, not in the business area. Thank you.
My name is Ash, this is the Collins, I'm at thirty-four oh nine, Norwich Street. I have a living ministry and also a little liquor speed salon. I don't think that it's a good idea for a package store to be over there, because, like I said, as far as bringing a positive area, the commons are a positive area. It's trying to increase the positive that's going on. Recently, I have been there, actually been there for about fifteen years, had no problems. About three weeks ago, my business got broken into. So I felt safe for all of these years, and now I, you know, had to put alarm system in and don't feel safe. Now I think it would add to anything positive, something in a package store, I think would add to the negative. And I do a lot of mentoring there, I do a lot of mentoring with young people and older people. I'm trying to encourage the positive, and I don't think that that would bring anything positive to our community. Thank you.
And I ask for a for or a against, just petition for provisional license. Any questions, or any calls for Jerry? Got a question about these, we're asking burglaries. Tie it up, tie it up. Are we making patrols on street? What's going on with that? Are you aware of all the burglaries, sir?
We are aware that we had an issue in zone three particularly. Some burglaries and even more entering autos, they did, are making arrests a few days ago. And certainly, the entering autos has dropped off. And I don't know the statistics for the last week, so the burglaries, we may have slowed down at least some of the crime in that area. So I guess we're aware of those.
And on this, we've been going out, reaching those persons that have been hit by this.
Well, the detectives will follow up on the other burglary and conduct some investigation.
Questions, commissioners? Well, I'll just say, you know, this is, we are very pro-active with business, pro-business. A lot of businesses come to our city. I don't think this commissioner has been quite doing for that. However, I will entertain a motion if no one, yes, sir?
Just for the purposes of, for a vehicle or someone, does not have constructive premises to a law for provisional license.
Right.
So I just want to make sure the commissioners are there.
We are aware, again, of that, of provisional license, we are aware, yes. Right.
So I just want to make sure record books are all over there.
Right.
The, the next question?
Sure.
Does this in any way, I guess, will not, but it term imply that the provisional license would guarantee a permanent license once construction is completely given?
Well, there's one thing we talked about, if you own this, the way it's written, it implies that you apply for a provisional license in this circumstance, you got a building that is not constructed. Then you have to go through the entire application process of the hearing so and so. Because if the commission must approve provisional license, then once the building was constructed, and assuming that they received their proper permitting from the state authority for the apartment revenue, if a CO position took the license issue. But the code implies, the order supplies is that if that provisional license would automatically convert to a permanent license. Okay? And so if it does that, that's the reason why the app has to go through the entire process. And actually, it's supposed to submit diagrams and sketches of where we propose building or leave. Supposed to shoot the measurements from both buildings, from the difference of both buildings' services and everything else. So to go through that, and to answer your question, yes, to approve provisional license in this circumstance, assuming the CO position fully building, once it was constructed, will convert to a permanent license or a full license. I said for or against, I don't intend to have any, by the time, excuse me.
Okay, you're the apple. Question? Sir, please state your name and address.
My name is Charles Wilson. I've been a citizen of King County for fifty-five years. And all I see, and I'm not a given as a white, white nation. All I see is these curtails opening up businesses which are in the black neighborhood. We're trying to do something different. We're trying to teach our children morals, good ethics. I listened to the gentleman he said about the ordinance. The ordinance clearly says that you cannot put a building of that, so, in the neighborhood, within that. I see that from, from what he's just saying. Now, I don't understand why that's a big issue. They have a lot of curtails around the, the liquor stores. To the not in one, you know, it's not a big deal. And they believe it's a big deal, you know. I suggest you just pack up this store somewhere.
Well, I was never not for. Please state your name, you have a question.
Jerry, sir. You know, this is, I think, I don't know, our ordinance has been one way. And this, I think, will be the first time that I've seen ever an alcohol license that we opened up for the floor. And I said, the key is, I'm, my thing is, I'm not for this, I told the guy before, I said, thank you, so we get it, because this ordinance was put on the books, it was put on the books knowing that no one was coming. And the ordinance was put on the books for that distance and for that purpose. So I'm not for against it, you know, I'm just saying that I think you should suggest eventually start following our licenses. And, I mean, that's all we have to do, we have to get into who opening the store, who opening the business, just follow our orders, you know, and so we don't need anything special. I wouldn't say you can't have it in the rest of the territory, you can have it. You know, so, and that's all I'm saying, I think that, you know, to open it up like, pretty much like our classmates do it, put this point forward, like on our town from the pack stores, trying to open our town this, to get down, kind of first to person. So I think the ordinance protected us, the ordinance tells us that you can't go there. You can't go there, taking it, the ordinance said you couldn't go there. That's who person who wants to spend their money and lose money, profit, that's fine. You know, so I, I just, you know, just simply, just like, just why we have to go through this with the orders, you know, you actually made your fair, you're going to go up the city, and you're not going to go your show up. You know, so we can kind of move on, you know, not, not forcing you, ready to tell you what I'm saying, we got to go by foot, because he came up and y'all wanted to go by the burglar. Mine was broken three straight days in a row, you know, I went home, I TV'd stuff in the backyard, you know, who told me that? The police, you know, when I got here, we were in the police nowhere, myself was still in the lane, I had to call the police. But they left it, that's all, what I'm saying is, we need to start following what's on the books and what's in the constitution.
Thank you, sir, any further comments? Any further comments, again, someone speak for or against this petition? Commissioners, if there be no other comments, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we deny the application for provisional license for the S K N M. K N L H T B A, I'm sorry. Sorry, I forgot.
Properly motioned, second, that we deny this petition request for provisional license. Any further discussion, commissioners?
This is mayor, I'm going to extend the rule in those particular items.
That's your right, any further questions, commissioners?
I just want to make the comment that I appreciate folks that took their time out there, even come speak. It really, it's good to hear people and see them here, helps us know what's going on in the UCT, so I appreciate everybody coming, taking their time.
Further discussion, commissioners? And being a, all of those things, please raise your.
And I'd just like to say something, I think that this speaks mountains to what we're trying to accomplish as this commission goes forward. We are not anti-business, but we are trying to build a better country. And we try to have a whole, everybody can have a voice in what takes place in their communities. Our communities don't have the same needs or qualities or circumstances, but we're trying to give voice to those who need or want to have a voice and have a concern of what happens and takes place in their community. We appreciate the details. We don't want you to take this as a, as a negative knock or, or implication. We welcome you to continue to, to be a part and to continue to expand what you offer. So we appreciate the businesses that we have open, but we're saying now that it happened here to the community, and they have those their concerns. But we look forward to having expanded relationships with liquor tails and businesses that they are bringing, future businesses, as well as those entrepreneurs that are now planted in the business that are, and that are looking to become a part of the city. So we're trying to bring all these efforts together so that we give everyone an opportunity to be heard and to work together to bring London a better place for all of us to live and to do business.
Any further discussion, commissioners? And being a, all those favor of, of the denial of this provisional license, please raise your right hand. I'm for, for staying. Can I let you show that there were four who were against this and one abstaining? Thank you, Mayor Combs, appreciate your preference. I have number seven, Commissioner, Commissioner and Board pointee, Urban Research Team. Some of you may remember in our last meeting that we appointed six members of that board, one being, we didn't appoint. So at this time, I want to appoint the last member of that board. That last member will be Mr. Jack Hartman. We have contacted Hartman, he has agreed to serve on that board. Also, I will be at the next, we begin with DDA, engaging terms, actually, terms of appointment, terms of service to him, so you should get a pulse, sir. Martin, Martin, they take RT, they take RT. Martin, they take RT, give me your. Okay, got that straight, Jack Hartman. This concludes our regular scheduled meeting. Are there any need for executive session?
Yes, we have personnel.
Personnel, and? So we will retire for personnel, and we will, excuse my name, motion to, you know, to the executive session, please. On most of that, we enter into the session, boys, and we will turn our regular meeting. Thank you.